All right, I'm gonna call to order this Hancock County Commissioners Meeting for October 4th, 2022.
I'm gonna move to approve the agendas presented with the exception of adding an item 11B, request approval to hire Madeline Dodger of Maine at step 9C effective October 1, 2022.
All those in favor?
You got a second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye. So, yeah, Commissioner Clark's under the weather, so he might be calling in, we'll see how that goes. We'll open up for a public comment. Seeing none?
I'm gonna approve the minutes of the September 20 special meeting as presented.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now it's time for the fun part, all your recognition. You have something to say for Sheriff?
I guess the first would be we're gonna recognize Deputy Frost for 10 years of service. He's a K-9 officer, first K-9 officer we've ever had at the Sheriff's Office, he does an outstanding job and I appreciate what he does and keep us safe, so.
I'm gonna move to recognize and thank Patrol Deputy Travis Frost for his 10 years of service in Hancock County. Our tempo is messed up there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, Paul?
Sure.
I don't know where you want me.
Stay on the stand.
Two, three. Good, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Travis. And the second one is, is a very big move. I would like to take this minute to advise the county commissioners, and I assume you've got the letter that I sent, that this is official notification of my nominating Lieutenant Corey Bagley to be the new Chief Deputy, replacing Chief Deputy Kane, retired last Friday. Corey has a close to 30 years, or just a little over 30 years experience. He started as a patrolman, worked his way up through, was assigned to MDEA. He was the supervisor, Special Agent at MDEA for a period of time, came back to patrol and was promoted to Lieutenant, and I'm very proud to make that as the new Chief Deputy of Hancock County.
Very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna move to accept and file the sheriff's notification per MRSA Title 38, Section 383 of the appointment of Lieutenant Corey Bagley, your Chief Deputy, effective October 1, 2022. Congratulate Lieutenant Bagley on his, on his appointment.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd also like to call up one of the white statesmen.
Penning ceremony is not like the military, right? There's no blood.
Depends on who he was as well. Go ahead.
You better make sure that's a good.
And you can see the sport that we have.
Is there any blood or no?
Yeah.
At least gonna be a handshake.
Congratulations.
That's all I have, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
I want to talk.
So, John, what time were they playing?
Well, it's a good day.
Being able to be to do the presentation.
Yeah, do you see?
Kinda curious.
Is Ben on there? Ben?
Nick is.
Nick is.
I don't see a Ben.
Should've brought my phone.
Jeans and the airbags in there.
Well, we can.
Did you, yeah, we can come back.
Fly through and then when you see him.
Yeah.
Grab my phone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stir them off, I'll say.
All right, thanks.
Okay, so we'll, I'm just gonna skip over.
Yeah, let's skip over our parade, and we'll move to number five. Neller, how are you doing?
Morning, commissioners. I don't have much to report today. On September 23rd, I got a call at 1 o'clock in the morning that there was a washout on the Nicatawash Road. Time I get up and got dressed and got the barricades loaded in the pickup truck, it was 1:30 time I left home. So I went up to Nicatawash and put up the barricades, so nobody would drive in the hole. And I got back home about 5:30. And then I, by then it was early enough so I could, late enough so I could call contractors, got someone on site and they got the washout fixed. But I'm afraid this time of year it's a temporary patch. What we found, there didn't seem to be any sticks like a beaver had chewed on, made a dam, but it wasn't, the culvert was packed with mud. So it might have been muskrats. I contracted a trapper to see if we can catch whatever is there for animals. In 2014, when we redid the Nicatawash Road, we replaced all of the culverts except the three big ones right there in Bog Brook, and they were in, in good shape. There are two five-foot diameter culverts and one three-foot diameter culvert. And it's this three-foot diameter culvert that plugged. I'm attending a SMAT stream crossing seminar tomorrow. Because the, the AUPC has adopted the SMAT stream crossing standards for all development crossings in the UT. So, on these three big culverts, it's not gonna be a matter of replacing culverts, we'll have to put in those, these new cement culverts. No, I'm attending a seminar tomorrow, and then I'm in hopes to get somebody from Hancock County Soil and Water to do a site visit with me this fall and try and move forward with plans to get it replaced this spring.
Sounds good. Just keep us up to date on it.
Yep. You were back along, I don't remember when it was, but I think it was July sometime, we talked about the commissioners going together for another field trip. And I'm wondering if that is still on the table and what the timeframe is to get that done.
I don't know, we'd have to look and see how heavy the agenda is, I think, I mean, we could do it on a separate day, it's just kinda hard to, but it could be a day maybe where we had a lighter agenda, it'd be nice to have, actually happen on a meeting day after the meeting. We could look at the second meetings, well, we know that November one isn't any good, so we'd have to see what this coming.
Plus, that's hunting season, we don't like to be shot at.
That'd be a good point.
Oh, you can take a rifle with you.
Maybe we can take a look and see what the, the second meeting here in October is gonna be like. I don't really see what the, what's proposed for the agenda, so we'll see.
I know we've been in the airport one and.
Right, he already sent documents to that, yeah.
Yeah. So I think maybe it's possible that we could.
It may be that you've gotta pick a different Tuesday rather than a, a meeting day.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, whatever, I'll make, I'll make it work on my end.
All right, well, we'll look at the agenda and I'll try to get back with you here next week, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Michael.
Yeah. Sure. Yep, all right.
Anything else for me, commissioners?
No.
Thank you.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark, can you hear us?
He's connecting a lot, yeah.
Okay, so are we going back?
Yeah, what do we have? Okay, all right, let's go on back to John.
Okay. All right. John, do you, anything to add to your report?
I just had an email, I've not had a chance to talk to him yesterday from Surrey, but it looks like they're ready to move forward for this MCA, if you remember, the grant rounds can open next Tuesday. So Surrey, looks like they wanna come to present, you know, give a report to you folks, probably next meeting, I'm guessing a couple of weeks, to look at their project. I haven't analyzed it depth at all, so. And then we have Ben. There he is, Ben from Google Fiber to present today.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move to accept the, uh, I'm gonna move to accept and file an report for Mission Broadband to present.
Seconding, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Honorable.
You.
So Ben.
Hello, everyone. Nice, nice to virtually meet you all, thanks to the benefits of technology. Appreciate you letting me present today, John, I guess I can move forward the presentation?
Yes, please do.
Okay, excellent. So whoever's host, if it's possible to allow me to screen share, I'd like to share a presentation with you all.
Try that one, we don't know how to do it.
Okay, John, I shared the presentation with you, I'm not sure how to put it on the screen otherwise.
I just have my phone with me.
Scott used to use that one. No, I don't know this one, but Scott used to use that one, so I don't know how it's connected.
I'm happy to verbally present the presentation if that works for you all, but the visuals are pretty.
Going forward on the.
Yeah, that'll work, go ahead.
Forward it on to us. Go ahead.
Okay, so. All right, so maybe at some point, John, you can sit down with him and show him the presentation, but for now, we'll go through, we'll go through verbally. Nice to meet you all, my name is Ben Segura, I'm the Corporate Development Technical Lead for Google Fiber. There's only myself and David Finn, who performed this particular role for corporate development. David Finn is the Director of Corporate Development, and he is in Seattle, so it is still very, very early his time. Otherwise, he'd be joining me this morning. So what we have to show to you today is a model for bringing Google Fiber to every person in business, potentially in Hancock County. And I know there's different enunciations of different towns, so if I, if I get something wrong, I'm from Louisiana, I have my own enunciations, I'm sure, I'm sure you folks in Maine have your own as well, so if I, if I butcher some, some enunciation, please let me know.
No problem.
So, to start with, Google Fiber, let's just, let's rewind a little bit. Google Fiber's goal since 2010 has really been to disrupt a very antiquated industry. I was one of the first Google Fiber folks, I started in 2011, just after they had run the survey of all of the cities, asking cities to, to, you know, decide whether or not they wanted Google Fiber to come to their city. We were only gonna pick one. Turns out, we picked Kansas City, Kansas. Yes, there is a Kansas City, Kansas, it's right across the street, right across the river from Kansas City, Missouri. And we picked Kansas City, Kansas, they had Board of Public Utilities there. And we, we signed a deal with the Board of Public Utilities to gain access to pole space and with the city for right of ways back in 2011. So it was, it's been a while, we launched service in 2012 in, in that area. And since then, we're now in 12 markets, Kansas City, Austin, San Antonio, Provo, Salt Lake City, Irvine, California, Atlanta, Huntsville, Alabama, Nashville, Tennessee, Charlotte, Raleigh-Durham, and West Des Moines, Iowa. The population we serve is about 7 million people. While that may sound like a lot, it's actually pretty small in the ISP world. We have fierce customer loyalty due to our extraordinary customer service. In 2021, PC Magazine ranked us the gold standard among ISPs, and I'll talk more about that a little bit later in the presentation. Now, our core belief is that everyone should have world-class internet. But we recognize we can't be everywhere. We, you know, even, even a company the size of Google, with the, with the pockets the size of Google, can't take its money and deploy everywhere in the US. It's just not something that, that we can do. It's, it's a giant task, which is why the federal government has stepped in with a bunch of initiatives and grant programs, which I understand you may be participating in. So like electricity and water, we think every home should be connected to world-class internet. Not only are we building what we call organically, which is where we hire people to build and we own the network. We aim to catalyze a movement in the internet, which is not only us building, but us leasing as well. We started this in two places, I'll talk more about that a little later in the prezo. But we are, we are, we are building full speed ahead in those 12 cities, and we've just announced Omaha, Nebraska, and Mesa, Arizona. And we just started digging in Des Moines, Iowa, I know I mentioned West Des Moines, but we started digging in Des Moines, Iowa as well, so we're gonna continue to expand in that metro. So we continue to have to choose our places to build carefully and our places to partner even more carefully. And we wanna pick places where the impact can be substantial. We do think Maine is one of those places where the impact can be substantial. We're passionate about Maine because we see an alignment of values. We believe that there's a profitable business here, and we believe it's entirely compatible with public ownership and open access. We don't think any other major ISP shares this view. We are aware of Century Link, which is now Lumen, signing a deal with Springfield, Springfield, Missouri, to bring internet through their public network. But we don't believe that network is actually open access. No one else has joined it, and we don't believe anyone else can. However, I'll talk about two models today that we've done that are open access. We've got Huntsville Utilities, which I'll share with you in a moment, and West Des Moines, Iowa, which is a slightly different network using conduit. So we know that Maine believes in public ownership and open access, we've talked to your broadband czar, we've talked to a bunch of the folks in the state. We know that public ownership and open access is something that's important to Maine. We think this value alignment creates an extraordinary opportunity to bring the top-ranked ISP in America, serving every home and business into your county. And like I said, we've executed this model twice. Susan Crawford is a Harvard professor. She had a book a while back called, I'm trying to remember what it was called. I didn't write it down here. Well, she wrote a book around the internet and basically hypothesized that the United States might start the internet revolution, but it would definitely miss it moving forward because of our antiquated policies and our duopoly system. So when Huntsville launched, she published an article in Wired, and she said, "I'm over the moon about this. It's a similarly exhilarating feeling to the one I'd have if I was a rabid football fan and my long-suffering team just won the Super Bowl. And don't mock my wonkiness, because you should be celebrating too. This is a model that could be revolutionary here in smashing the current dogma that keeps Americans overcharged and underserved." So, I'll tell you a little more about our partnership with Huntsville Utilities. Huntsville Utilities owns the open-access, non-exclusive network built to every home in business. They own the fiber portion, and they own all the colocation facilities or POP sites, as some people call them. So they own all of the buildings and fiber that go to every home and business. That started out as 95,000 homes, today it's in excess of 112,000 homes. Google Fiber leases the network, we guarantee payments to Huntsville without regard to customer penetration revenue. So a lot of these models are all rev-share models. We're not proposing a rev-share model, we're proposing a guaranteed lease payment to you to lease the network. And other folks who want to provide service on your network can lease on the same terms also, so it's not exclusive to us. Now, that network was completed in 2021. Other ISPs jumped on very fast. I'll explain that a little more later, but there are seven other ISPs on that network today. The other model I wanted to talk about was the West Des Moines model that I mentioned a minute ago. West Des Moines built a conduit system throughout their city. Now, in that model, the city pays for half the cost of the network, Google Fiber pays for half the cost of the network, sort of like a PPP in that way, but it's, it's more of a shared cost partnership than a PPP. The city owns in that model, it's open access, non-exclusive, built to every home. These are themes that we, you know, want you to hear. And this is the model that we're proposing to every city, town, and county in Maine. Now, John's helping us meet some other of your folks in that area, and we're hoping to get something in Maine going. We think it could be Hancock County to start it. The county owns the network, you know, you guys receive any grant funding to pay for it, we don't want any of your grant funding. Whatever grant funding you get goes to paying into the network. We, Google Fiber will pay our portion through a 30-year lease. We make guaranteed payments, again, without regard to customers' revenue, and we assume the market risk of getting those customers. We don't need you to assume the market risk. Now, if another tenant joins, they're gonna assume the entire market risk for their customers. So we hope that this is a model that takes the risk out of the county's bucket and puts it into the service provider's bucket. Like I said, seven other ISPs have joined the network in Huntsville Utilities. Actually, I'm looking now, that's been updated to eight, eight other ISPs, including Century Link, I just mentioned a minute ago. DC Blocks, UAH, Simple Helix, New Hope Telephone Cooperative, which is an interesting one, a cooperative join Huntsville Utilities Network, Unity Fiber, Traveler, and Indigital. Now, the city government is on this network as well as Huntsville Utility School System, I'm not counting those. But it's able to provide public service to support the public sector. I mean, that's real important because Huntsville Utilities is owned wholly by the government of Huntsville, Huntsville City. So they're able to provide more services there. Now, in West Des Moines, it's very, very new. We just signed this deal a couple of years ago, they've just started putting the conduit in the ground. And two direct competitor ISPs have now joined that network. So in Huntsville, those ISPs on the network, they're not servicing residential. But in West Des Moines, they are. MediaCom, which is an incumbent cable company in West Des Moines, has joined the network. My Fiber, who had been there for years prior to us, which is another fiber giga builder, they're providing residential ISP service over the network also. So West Des Moines is interesting, not only because it's a slightly different model where it's not fiber, it's conduit, but two residential ISPs have, have, have now joined the network. We are over the moon about that, we think West Des Moines is gonna do very well with three ISPs on the network. And, you know, having an incumbent join is a signal that the tide is changing. Now, highspeedinternet.com is a website that a lot of folks use to find webs, to find internet in their area. In 2022, this year, they've named us the fastest internet provider. So, you know, we're doing pretty well in that area in speed. Now, speed's only one thing. The American Consumer Satisfaction Index, or ACSI, which ranks a lot of industries, ranked Google Fiber first in 22 categories this year, including customer satisfaction. So not only do we have a speed component, but we also have customer satisfaction. Reader's Choice, which is another magazine that, that ranks ISPs, ranked Google Fiber in 2021 the gold standard among ISPs. And it wasn't even close. And it wasn't even close when it comes to rankings in 2021. Google Fiber got a plus 68, which, you know, it isn't 100, and we have things to work towards. But it ranked the other major providers like Cox, Spectrum, Comcast, Century Link, AT&amp;T, minus 12s, minus 13s, minus 23, and minus 21 respectively. And I know that Consolidated is in your area. Consolidated was too small to be ranked. But other surveys have ranked it actually worse than AT&amp;T service. So we are, you know, doing really well when it comes to serving customers. And we want you to know this because we think this is an opportunity for you to bring the best ISP in the country to your to your county. Now, why are we number one? I mentioned speed. I mentioned customer service, but price and reliability are also reasons that people choose Google Fiber. Our internet product is $70 for one gig up and one gig down. It's been that way since I started, since we launched Kansas City. We include whole-home Wi-Fi, 24/7 customer service, no installation fees, no data caps, no annual contracts, free Wi-Fi. All of those things are included in our product. They're not add-ons. They're not extras. There's not some modem rental. There's no promotional periods. We hope to offer some promotional periods soon, but it would lower the price from these points, not raise it. Now, we also offer two gigs for $100 with Wi-Fi 6 included. You know, so compare that as you're thinking about it to what other providers might provide in your area. Those are pretty good prices. And from a reliability standpoint, our network is 99.95% reliable, and we guarantee that. When we're down, we pay customers. That's one thing that other ISPs don't do. So I wanted to let you know about the reliability piece as well. So again, this is fiber for every person in your county. No one is left out. That's fundamental. Every person in business gets the ability to get fiber internet access. Everyone gets the same speeds. This is real important because a lot of other competitors will launch 10 gig, 20 gig, 8 gig, 5 gig, but it's it's offered to like five places. When we offer a service, we offer it everywhere. And to this end, there are some towns that don't have our 2-gig offering today. It's because we're rolling it out to the entire town, our city, our county, where we're launching. Excuse me. And then everyone gets the industry's best customer service. We don't just have some folks getting good customer service to get these rankings. Everyone gets great customer service. And we feel it's a lot like electricity, like not everyone should have electricity only on for eight hours a day. Everyone should have electricity for 24 hours a day. And therefore, we think you should find a way with us to partner to bring the best internet to everyone in your in your county. Now, not everyone can afford $70, and we know that. So while a $70 feature-packed service is great, it's just not within reach for everyone. You won't find this on our website because it's not launched yet. But for those households that are economically disadvantaged, we are going to be offering a new product. Now, you may have heard of our participation in the Affordable Connectivity Program. We are participating. The Affordable Connectivity Program provides a $30 subsidy to homes that are within two times the national poverty level, 200% of the national poverty level. Now, this new product will be, John, this will be new to you because you may have heard before that it was 100 megs. It will actually be 300 megabits, and it will be $30 a month. Thereby making, you know, the what the 95% of the wealthiest Americans in the currently currently get, it'll be free for those folks who are who are able to get the Affordable Connectivity Program and are within 200% of the poverty level. So 300 megabits, $30 a month, $30 subsidy, they'll get it for free. And that's, you know, with Wi-Fi included. That's not some nickel-and-time package that we're saying, hey, it's 30 bucks. Hey, but you got to pay all these other fees. We're actually aiming to make it payment-free, which, you know, for those folks who don't have credit cards, the ability to get credit cards, they don't have to have one. We'll provide the service, and we'll continue to monitor their status in the Affordable Connectivity Program. So we think this is a pretty great product on top of already great service.
So then, we've run out of time for you, but can you address competition and how you look at competition? Because with the county, there's certainly a few other providers here that are providing service that definitely pockets of unserved and underserved as well as, do you get involved in the design, engineering, and construction phase?
We assist in that phase. You know, we would look to work with someone like you, John, who the county would hire to to design and build. If now, if there's a way that we can work this this relationship where the county does something like makes the poles ready or puts conduit in the ground, similar to what Hunts, similar to what West Des Moines did. And I know that, John, you and I have talked a little bit about some alternative methods other than the county building fiber to every home. We would, in fact, get involved very deeply in the fiber design as we do in West Des Moines. We have a very good relationship with them. They do the conduit design. They pass it over to us. We make sure that we can provide our network over that. We pass any changes back to them, and they're able to make those changes. Now, if those changes end up costing them more money than our agreement, we pay for those. So I wanted you to hear, one, that we are open to competing against all of those other folks. We want to go everywhere, not just some places. And we are ready and willing to compete against anyone, not just on, you know, in an open competitive environment. But if if the county were to go and get money to, you know, put strand on the poles or put conduit in the ground, and they wanted to lease not just to us but to others, including the providers in your area, great. The only thing we ask is because of a, because it's very disruptive, we ask that it be coordinated. And we have some some ideas around coordination on how that might work. Obviously, everyone can't lash to strand at the same time. They can't pull conduit in the ground at the same time. They can't fix the network when it's broken at the same time. So we've got some ideas around how that might work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on, it's a little bit different design than the last one that you've heard still, so we know what's shipping, how that's going to work, and how you fill gaps. More more education, if you will, on, you know, opportunities, like, you know, should you have what you said?
Yeah, when you get a chance, just give us the presentation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and how it all fits together, but that's.
Yeah, and I'm happy to present again in any context necessary. And I did pass, John, the presentation. He does have it under NDA from us, so he's allowed to present it to you. And we can't send it because of public records. But but he's 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 got the presentation, and John, I'll make sure that, you know, you have all the latest info whenever that whenever that presentation happens.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this I'll sign off now. Thank you for letting me attend your your county commissioners' meeting.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anything else, John?
I think that's it. I'll be back in a couple of minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, do we have Leroy? Hello, Leroy.
Hey there. Yeah, I'm here. The only update, I guess, on the report was, yeah, we had the FAA inspection came out pretty well. I believe I sent you an up update on the the results. We haven't got the official results yet, but looked pretty good. We're also, we're all pretty happy about that. So they didn't tell us to close the place down and go elsewhere, so that was a big plus. So that's the only update to the monthly report.
I'm going to move to accept and file airport manager's report as presented in this memo dated September 23rd.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The the Amendment Six to the Columbia Air Agreement. We've we've worked through some concerns. I believe we finally have settled on a mutually agreed wording, and it was really mainly around mechanic and inspector. We wanted to make sure that we had the verbiage in there that they would they would have a mechanic and an inspector. So the the drawback to what's going on is the mechanic they have does not have an inspector rating, but the minimum standards will allow them to subcontract that service or services. So they should be able to subcontract that service to their facility, their Connecticut facility, so they'll have somebody on site when that service is required. I just got a copy of the concessionaire agreement this morning for that. I need to talk to their counsel a little bit on a couple of wording wording places in there, just so I'm clear on what it says. But I think we can move forward on the agreement at this point and settle the concessionaires. And they've they've admitted that they're going to ask their mechanic to procure the inspector's rating, so.
Do you have any idea how long it's going to take for that certification to happen?
Um, we don't. That's why we I asked them to come up with the subcontract, so we or, you know, within that guidelines, so we would have that covered. And then hopefully, they will, you know, they they've admitted that they they want to move forward on having that certification. So in in good faith, I think they 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 will move that way with with the with the concessionaire agreement, it kind of covers us in the minimum standard side with what we've asked them to do.
So this Amendment Six doesn't change any of the minimum standards or any, doesn't really address what you've talked about, right? This Amendment Six is just for extra fuel, right?
Well, within that Amendment Six, okay, we've asked them to.
Where?
Can you jump in there, Nick? I don't have it right in front of me.
Well, hi, good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for entertaining our our amendment both. It does a number of things. One is that it increases the the flowage fee for fuel. And it provides authorization to construct a additional bulk storage. And it also provides for an extended term of of 10 years in order to amortize that. And and also, you know, Leroy and I did work very closely to to, we like to think, satisfy the county's needs for maintenance on on the airport and also bridge the gap between when our AMP can get his inspection authorization, which he's proceeding to do as soon as absolutely possible. But there is going to be a period of time between now and when he gets that, that we we're going to have to bring some people up from 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 Groton, Connecticut.
Yeah, so I've got a minute.
Okay, Paul.
And and all those things are very clear, but where is the section that addresses?
I think I can answer that, Paul. Go to Article Three. It's, it shows as paragraph six, Article Three.
Article Three.
It starts out FBO category.
Yeah, it it just, it just restates.
It restates it, but we tweaked the wording a little bit. We used the word and instead of or, I think, I mean, person certified.
Me, it's consistent with what was there before. That's, I'm just trying to see what the difference.
I think there's one word in there that changed it to says FAA. One person currently certified by the FAA with ratings appropriate to the work being performed and who holds an airframe power plant and inspector rating. Before, it didn't have the word and in there.
Okay, well, I didn't pick that up. Okay.
That that was the tweaking that we did was to make sure that we got the, you know, that they would require that when when they had the their certified repair station. The inspectors were all part of the repair station, so it really wasn't an issue there. So we wanted to hold them to, they they had to have an inspector on staff. So if somebody came in and wanted an annual or something, they would be able to do it without problems.
Yeah. I saw the highlight portion in your memo, and then I saw Article Three. And they look in fact, they both say.
Yeah, yeah, the the original minimum standards does not say and.
Okay, so that's the difference.
That's the difference, yeah.
Okay, so effectively, a guy gets a guy gets an annual. The the AMP does the annual. You need an inspector to sign it off. So what, an inspector comes from Groton to do that?
Yeah, you can you can contract that out. Yeah, yeah. So that would be that would be the scenario until they till their person gets the the appropriate rating.
Yeah, I just.
It's it's a common practice, you know, for for operators. And I mean, Maine Coast, that's what Maine Coastal Flight is doing for right now because they don't have an inspector on staff, is they're contracting an inspector to do their portion of the. So they do all the AMP work. And then the inspector comes by, he inspects it, finds any new items, mechanic fixes it, and 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 they jointly sign it sign it off. That that makes sense?
It does. If you say that's common practice, I just don't.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to move to approve Amendment Six to the lease and operating rights agreement between the County of Hancock, Maine, and Columbia Air Services, BHBLC, and to sign the document as presented while stressing that the commission fully expects the less-ordered file of all terms of the lease moving forward.
Seconded. Any other comments?
No.
All those in favor?
Can I quick question?
Yes.
So Leroy, I was following the email correspondence this morning. It sounds like you still have some questions about the subcontract. Is that going to impact anything here that they're deciding on right now?
I think it's just some some wording that I think can be corrected. The the way I read his subcontract, it and it may be just my interpretation. I didn't get a chance to to get ahold of Nick this morning off, you know, offline. About it, it sounded like reading through that quickly that they was subcontracting the whole services to to Columbia Air Services, Inc., which is in Groton. And and I'm kind of suspect that he just pulled a concessionaire agreement he had from something else. It so I'm fairly confident we can work through the proper wording on that to get to the to the common goal. I'm not not real concerned.
I I just want to be clear on the goal, right? Where, so the the goal is that you're going to have maintenance available at 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 the airport. A guy, somebody can get an annual, get an IFR cert, do all those things that traditionally were done there. That.
Well, let's let's back up. You threw an IFR cert. The IFR cert will will know. And that's because, you know, part of this new agreement is they're they're removing the avionics portion of their operating rights. Okay, and here's the reason from from what I've been. And here's the reason, from from what I've been told, they surrendered their. FAA repair station certificate. And in order to do IFR certifications, you have to have a repair station certificate. So the only way that they can go back and do that is they would have to reapply. For a certificate to do the certification.
So I guess I'm I'm clear, in the original operating agreement. It mentioned some of those things, avionics, and I don't have it in front of me, but.
Right, right.
Okay, now, where is that? As I understand understood your memo and this agreement, we're not getting rid of all that, are we?
Uh, just on on behalf of of Columbia, um, you know. We have the ability to do avionics, um, and we have a robust avionics shop in Groton, Connecticut. And uh, under the concessionaire agreement that that we're working on, uh, we would be able to provide. Uh, avionics services as well. It's not limited solely to uh, maintenance, uh, but uh. You know, we are in the wake of the of the pandemic, trying to rebuild. Um, our maintenance capabilities there, and this is a a significant start towards that. Uh, and uh, our intention is to continue to build and continue to hire, continue to advertise. And and ultimately, uh, develop a robust maintenance and avionics. Um, uh, concession at the airport. Uh, but it's gonna take time for us to do that, and and we think we've made some pretty big strides. Uh, but we are not gonna let up. We're going to continue to press forward to do that. And in the meantime, if somebody needs something, uh, uh, from, you know, for from avionics technician. Uh, we can arrange that either through third-party concessionaires or by uh, addressing the problem in Groton, we're flying somebody up. But uh, but we, uh, you know, we don't currently have an avionics technician on site. We're advertising, uh, we're pushing forward. We understand the county uh, values avion- avionics and maintenance very highly. We aim to be uh, a part of the solution there and uh, uh, but we we are where we are right now, which is we found an AMP. We're we're get getting him into his uh, inspector authorization training. He's a good guy and uh, and we're on we're on the track to recovery, and so. That that's that's Columbia's response.
Yeah, no, I I, that's all great, but is that being taken out of that agreement? That's my question.
Okay, so the avionics is being taken out of the agreement because they can't meet that part of the standard. At this point, because they have no FAA certified repair station. Because it says uh, FBO category VIIII. FBO authora- uh, FAA authorized repair station for avionics. They they can't meet that requirement because they surrendered their certificate.
So.
So to ans- to answer your question about the the IFR cert, Paul, is you have. An AMP mechanic with an inspector rating can't do that certification, has to be a repair station.
No, I understand that, and my question is is.
And I guess, Mike.
Oh, FBO category. Authorized repair station, avionics sales and service is deleted, okay? So that that paragraph is not the. That's a significant.
So so there's a couple of ways that they could fulfill that.
What I'm concerned with is this agreement, is this agreement what we should be moving forward with that? And to I I understand their intentions. But this agreement does not. Does not codify the statement, it's it's removing it and and I guess I'm not comfortable doing that. Because I would rather see an agreement that that's. Um, more in line with with, you know, their council statement, which, you know, I have to say is probably. What their intentions are, but that's not in line with this agreement. That's my point.
Uh, and one one question I guess I would have for them also would be. You know, they're they're talking about bringing people up to Far Harbor to. Do some of these services, okay? Whom pays for those people to get to Far Harbor? Um, you know, is that gonna? Fall burden on a customer, or is that falling burden on Columbia Air Services because they aren't meeting the standard?
It the the cost of of bringing people up is gonna be borne by Columbia Services or our BHB. And not by the customer. Um, we we understand that we need the the talent locally, we just need to find it and uh. Uh, but uh, bringing somebody up is an interim measure to, you know, to make sure that we do comply with the minimum standards in the interim.
Yeah, because my real concern with that is is, you know, so now the the person gets a a pass through. You know, be somehow or rather buried in the cost. That show, you know, that they don't understand why, and all of a sudden, you know, it's a three thousand, you know, two thousand dollar. True, because they had to get somebody up here from Connecticut to do that. Um, that's part of my concern with this. Now, to answer the avionics question, there is a way around it where they could. Take the Connecticut facility and make a satellite. Facility at Far Harbor and run it through the Connecticut operation. And and then that could cover the the avionics side. That would be an FAA. Um, issues, you know, there would be some some paperwork involved to make that happen.
My, you know, that's, you know, not my business, my what my business. Here, our business is, the disagreement is, you you know, in line with what the intentions are and. How we as the commission want to see the airport, um, you know, move forward. I I, you know, Bar Harbor was always well-known as, you know, have being a full-service uh, FBO. I hate to see that go backwards, because, you know, that's quite frankly, that's happening everywhere and. You know, luckily, we have, we continue to have the traffic that we have here and, you know, I I. It's not that I don't want to see somebody succeed, it's the opposite. I want to see them succeed. Because I think that's how the county succeeds, but. I am not comfortable. I I I think this language needs to be more in line with what their council has outlined, I mean.
At a minimum, I think that this subcontract needs to be looked at some more before. Because if that's gonna be the basis of meeting those types of services that the county desires. We need to make sure that we're clear that the subcontract i- is spelled up completely and clearly and has all of the. Uh, any ambiguity that might be in it addressed as much as we can before, you know, commissioners are being asked to move forward approving. Something that says that or might say ultimately that they're gonna provide less service.
Yeah, because what this says, I I I, FBO category, and that wasn't in the memo, so I. Uh, FAA authorized repair station for avionics sales and service is deleted. I don't think that that's consistent with, um, that's certainly not consistent with what the present, uh, uh, agreement is. And I'm not sure that that's consistent with what their council has has stated, you know, and I'm not questioning him, I'm just saying. This agreement, the two are not consistent.
Commissioner Parity, the 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 agreement is consistent with the airport's minimum standards, which require. An airframe and power plant mechanic and either a repair station so you can sign off annuals or an IA inspection authority so you can sign off.
Yeah.
And uh, so I I understand and appreciate your concerns. Uh, and I, but I do think that the agreement does comply with that, and it complies with the minimum standards, which is what the standard is, so.
Com- complies with that minimum standard, I.
Right.
Minimum standard is also avionics, right? Currently.
Correct, correct, that that's. You're, I think we're we're talking two subjects. I believe the, I believe the maintenance subject is covered.
Yes.
We, I think we all agree on that.
But in that agreement that we now have that's in full force now.
Correct, okay.
Is avionics.
Correct.
And here it says that it's being removed. That's my only discomfort.
In in the new agreement, and I I'm I'm gonna apologize a little bit, because every now and then I get a buffer in and then I. I I'm I'm filling in words what I think you're saying, so if I'm going in the wrong direction, I I apologize, but it sounds like you're. The the concern at this point is the deletion of the avionics section. Am I correct there?
Yes, because it seems like we're relaxing the minimum standards. Now, I understand it's tough for them to comply right now.
Ag- agreed.
I I fully understand that, I, you you know, and I also, and I'm sorry, I I. I can't, I can't see the council's last name, so I'm sorry, I keep saying.
It's Nick Burlingham.
Burlingham, okay, so as Mr. Burlingham has stated there, they're having. Tough time to comply with everything and, well, specifically the avionics, but their intention is to. At some point in the future, comply or or offer that service. He I didn't mean to put that word in your mouth. But that is in our current minimum standards, and the question for the for the commission is, are we willing to get rid of that standard? Because they're having a hard time now, and I'm not, I'm not convinced that we are.
They're not able to provide it.
They're unable to provide it, but their intention is to hope to provide it to. You know, maybe we acknowledge that they're having in the agreement that, you know, times are tough. And there's, you know, it's a tough labor market, especially in in, you know, in that industry. But nonetheless, I don't think we should just get rid of it. Uh, you know, unless unless there's a compelling reason to do it, I'm just, sorry to keep going in a circle and prolong this, but. It, this somewhat surprised me, because I didn't see it addressed anywhere till now. Um.
Well, Commissioner Parity, we're we're happy to put it back in. Uh, we we like the opportunity to provide uh, services and we like the right to do it. Uh, and that's that's that would be fine. We we'd be happy to put that back in. We're not fighting that at all. Especially if the commission will give us just a little bit of time to, uh, you know, to recover.
Yeah, I I I, yeah, I think we're all on the same team here. I don't mean to argue with anybody, but I.
Could I propose perhaps that the commission consider approving uh, amendment six with that change?
With putting with putting it back in?
Uh, can I add something here for a second?
Go ahead.
So. If they put that in, if we put that back in. Um, now they're back in non-compliance with the minimum standards. Because they're, and and I and I'm I'm kind of circling around with you, Paul. Um, how do we, and and the other thing that I would suggest is we put. Some sort of, if if we put it back in, or or choose not to remove it, let's put it that way. Um, we put some sort of a timeframe on this. We just don't leave it open-ended.
Well, I I am for. I think we're all on the same team. I am for expanding the fuel farm, for lack of a better term, because I think it's needed, proven that it's needed. I don't like modifying language like this on the fly and I and. This really am I have as an attorney, I assume, like, I can't imagine he likes us doing it on fly either. So, so I. I I'm trying to craft a motion that gets us there, doesn't put, I mean, is there any fires to get this done now today?
If I, if I may, I I think at this point, maybe we should table this thing.
Yeah, that's.
Hammer out some more, some more stuff. Get the concessionaire agreement squared away, get um, get this language squared away and figure out how we can meet the standard. Get a, get a timeframe in for them to meet the standard and uh, and then bring it back.
That's fine, that makes sense, sure.
I mean, is there, are we holding anything up by?
No, no, uh, we we wanna, I mean. We we will, we want to contract our our folks for the for the fuel uh, improvement, and that's really what the pressure is. We, we have to order all the uh, equipment and get the engineering services long in advance, and there's a lot of competition for that talent and and. Um, so, you know, the the pressure on us is really, we really need to have this thing in place for next year and uh. You know, is two weeks gonna hurt? No, it's not, we'll be fine, but uh, but uh, but we probably ought to try to wrap it up. So we can get going, that's all.
I agree, I just, I I think that the the better the agreement is, the better for you, because you have rights to do something. Better for us, because we're all on the same page, and I really think we're there. I I I just not sure to disagree that this. Language is there, uh, and I don't mean to be difficult, but I really.
You're you're not being difficult, you're being careful, we understand. Uh, we've been on the ground there for almost two decades.
Yeah.
We're a partnership, we've got to get it right, and uh, and if you can have some leniency on us while we try to rebuild, all the better.
Yeah, I fully understand that it's a tough labor market, especially there and and, you know, I I wanna see it. I wanna see this, but, you know, I wanna go, I hate to say I wanna go back, but, you you know, I I think Bar Harbor is is. Is, you know, that's a heck of an asset for both of us, that airport, and and I just want to ensure that that keeps happening, so.
So would I suggest for you, make a motion though, that in that motion you include that they get something, if it's gonna be in two weeks, that they get something back to you. Say the Thursday or Friday before your meeting, the difficulty with this, like this morning, as of last night when I left, we didn't have an agreement. As of this morning, we didn't have an agreement, and then we had this agreement with the sessionary thing, which then, once you see that agreement. Raises some of these other questions, so it it would be helpful, I think, for the commissioners to know. What it is you're gonna be asked to vote on in its entirety, so that we make sure that Leroy and 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 council and everybody's. On the same page, and if we have to have our council look at it, that they've seen it as well before, before you actually take it out, I guess.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second on the floor, if that's okay with the second.
I'd like to withdraw.
Yeah, withdraw it. Okay, so, uh. Do you? Do you feel that, um? Everything, do you want formal action that gives them a date to me? The onus is on them, the deadline. For a meeting is the Thursday before the meeting. You know, I think we need to be that clear, that needs to be clear. Uh, you know, if it comes in Friday or Monday, it's not making that meeting, because then something like this happens. Uh.
You won't. So I don't think it needs to be in the motion, but just now that you've stated to them and me, so the the three of us know that. If if we aren't able to get all that done by then, then it's not gonna go on the agenda in two weeks.
Yeah, is that fine? Is that clear and agreeable?
Sure, we we understand.
Yes. Okay, great, again, sorry to belabor it.
Thank you very much, commissioners. We appreciate your time.
All right. All right, EMA. Any?
I do not, unless you have questions about anything that might have shared.
No, I'm going to move to accept and file EMA director's report as presented in his memo dated September twenty seventh. Thank you.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, Patrice, would you capture Commissioner Clark's presence on the floor in twenty please? Somehow.
He's not there.
Oh, he isn't?
No, we'll come down again.
Okay, so, thank you.
This is just a roster.
So, yeah, so for our next topic, um, in funding the hazard mitigation plan update. Uh, we have the opportunity to do that through soft match, income and soft match. And my getting you to sign that roster is worth twenty-three dollars towards the end.
Okay, so, uh. Your. We've got this, uh, contract for professional services in front of us, is that, did you want to talk about that or are you ready for that?
I did, we, we followed the administrative process required, um, by both our county policies and, and state and federal governments. Um, in requesting RFQs, well, the requisite, uh. Content, we received one, uh, response. Uh, which fortunately is, uh, the contractor who provided these services to us the last time we updated the plan. Uh, six years ago, um, when we began the process, so. Uh, that's, that's all the, of, we'd made.
Okay, so, uh, I have one question, in, in his, um. In, in that document, that contract for professional services, it, it has a not to exceed of seventeen thousand five thirteen.
Correct.
So, if I were, uh. So I'm going to make this motion and you can, I think my language is correct. I'm going to move to award the contractor of professional services in support of Hancock County Hazard Mitigation Plan twenty twenty-three. To Roth Associates to authorize the EMA Director to sign the letter of agreement for the county. Uh, for the Hancock County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update twenty twenty-three as presented. Not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred thirteen dollars specified degree.
Correct.
Great, so that's my motion.
Seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, I, just as an addendum, you'll notice that the, in what I shared with you, that the total cost of the project.
Is.
Includes that soft match.
That's right.
Right, because we're going to have some internal expenses and we need to make sure those are covered.
Yeah, and that, that's why I was, I wanted to make sure my language was correct.
Yes, correct, it's, it's kind of hard to articulate that.
Yeah.
So, yes, even on paper, it's hard to, sure, so, thank you. And then I had one other item, which was to update you. On the shared position, um, between EMA. And, uh, the airport, and we have posted that for the requisite ten days internally, and I don't believe there have been any. Internal cabinets. So to add, the plan is to, uh, advertise that publicly, I'd like to do that at no cost, just online, using the county's. Site.
Sounds good.
Site, you know, attached to our website. And then proceed from there, and, and both Michael and others agree to be part of the interview process.
Yes, and our prior action.
Yes.
Has been taken toll on, perfect.
Yep. Outstanding, thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Hello. A quick thing. Request to hire Hector Munoz Chavez of Ellsworth, Pat Time on call, a unique corrections officer. At pay level nine A with no benefits effective October eighth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Request to hire Lisa Waddle, Vanguard's full-time corrections officer, pay level nine C with benefits effective. October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, this individual is. Fully employed, certified for another agency who may require a buyout.
When will we find that information?
I need to speak with their administration to see how they want to handle it. May waive it, may not. She's two years, ends over eighty-one hundred twenty dollars. Not sure I'm going to find that, but.
How much?
Eighty-one hundred, he's out to one hundred twenty dollars for a two-year buyout.
So, uh. I'm on board, I'm just trying to figure out how we deal with that buyout, is that in your budget?
I don't know where I'm going to find it, because we give, never, that process bridge is fragile.
So how, uh. I mean, obviously the.
Michael, do you think Art can get use for it or not?
I would assume that probably in this case, I mean, I, I would also assume that. The events the last two years have also created that need as a result of it.
I would think, yes. So, that's where I would want it to come out of.
I'll check my reserves if I have anything, I don't think we've looked at that much, such a lot, much of that reserves.
So I think if I move to hire, uh. Well, so moved, which is this, move to hire Lisa Dingle of Vanguard's Full-Time Corrections Officer, pay. Level nine C with benefits effective October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. That doesn't address the buyout. But.
We can address that.
We can address that when the time comes, I mean, I'll, I'll state that I think that i- if a buyout. Needs to take place, that it's got to be cheaper than training somebody, and so it's a proven thing to do, I just don't.
Yeah.
We don't know what it is or where it's coming from yet, but I think this motion is broad enough to allow you to go forward. Right, Michael, do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the intent is, obviously commissioners are going to have to back and address that, so.
Yeah.
I second that emotion, that, uh, motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And hopefully this, the, the. Sounds like we're making progress.
Yes, I think so.
I know you've had a tough time.
And we're not, I don't want people to, we're not out. Trying to poke people into agencies, we was approached by this individual, we weren't. We're not knocking on doors trying to grab that officer, every department is the same way.
Yeah.
So, but just a quick update on the scam, the body share, um, training is going on today. Um, all the paperwork, we will be filed, filed today for, to get us online, so. By tomorrow afternoon, all officers are going to be trained on, on the system, how to use it, now we just wait for. Some documentation from a statement, a thumbs up to others, put it, put it back, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
First, Dennis.
He was here, he was here.
He's on the call. Dennis, are you, uh. Going to meet with us remotely?
He's on, he's on the call and he's out loud, it's two places at once. Yeah, not here.
All right, go on.
All right, let's go, Bob, why don't you step up, take the place. Do you have anything to add to your monthly report?
Uh, not, I believe, no.
Move to accept and file RCC Director's Report as presented.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Requesting permission to hire. Uh, hire Madeline Gardner of Edmonds, uh, for step nine C effective.
So it should be October eighth?
I believe it is.
Yeah.
She, uh, she's coming to us from Washington County, she's a part-time dispatcher down there, fully certified with everything except for spilling. They don't have spilling, yeah, so, that was justification starting her out, she has two years of experience. Working down there.
So moved. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anything else for us?
I think so, I call one, shut and drop slightly, and, but they're still super complicated and EMS, continues to be the. Frustrating issue for us, as well as getting hammered by tons of these scam people, we're all worse than ever. We're getting probably twenty, thirty a day now, uh, in the middle of other calls. Some of the records, some of the actual people.
Ethan, thanks. Hi, Dennis.
Hey, guys.
Anything to add to your monthly report, Dennis?
Uh. I, I had one omission, that was the flooring is complete in the probate office, we carved it down and tiled the bathroom, uh, looks great.
Is the bill paid on it already?
I don't know, I think they. Into the warrant, yes, just.
So I'm going to move to accept and file Facility Director's Report as presented in his memo dated September twenty-eighth.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the minutes from that meeting that Kyle.
Oh, yeah, we have, look at it.
Michael?
Yeah. Perfect.
What's your assessment of the meeting?
Uh, I, I think it went pretty well, I had real high confidence with the contractor. Has them all, they know what they're doing.
Yeah.
And they've worked here at the courthouse before. In a repointing jobs many years ago, but, uh. You know, it's a pretty crack outfit, and. I think they agreed to do it because. The start time was a year from now. So they, they felt they could, could manage to squeeze it in, what. What they'll do this fall, you saw, is going to be very basic, very, you know, a day or two to come in and, and just kind of put a. Uh, put the kibosh to the water, racing down the walls, and then next year begin an earnest, next fall, and. We'll see, I, we did ask about, uh, like the handicap walkway, which Kyle didn't mention, but. And it was, they acknowledged that they're going to have to ask the county permission. Or, you know, acquire this piece of property in some way to have that. Uh, walkway placed there, and. You know, so I guess that's a, I, you remember Commissioner Clark had asked them about maybe locating it or putting it at the front, like. They're really, I guess they're finding that not workable. So, we'll. You know, it's an old building, needs a handicap, we know that drill. And, and how, I guess we're kind of at it, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Phase, but there's timeline looks, I don't know if it's reasonable, you'll see three, four weeks to do that salt wall, we'll see. I think that's ambitious, but.
You know, one thing that came to mind, since we talked about the handicap. Are there zoning ordinances, I mean, that's a separate lot now, right?
It is, they're located just on the footprint, so they.
Yes.
But no, they do have that ten-foot strip.
Yeah.
That paved area is.
So there might be some issues there, but that, that'll. Let's see how those flush out.
So, and, uh, the sheriff met with Tom Clark, the city's rep, who was. Uh, I guess pretty upfront about what was happening, and he expressed his concerns. You know, to the degree that, to the extent that he's operating a law enforcement agency and. And can't be held up, you know, can't be encroached upon, you know, to a large extent. And they seem to feel that they can work around it, I mean, might get, that's the impression I had, did you have any other?
Contractor was seeming more than willing to accommodate however, so.
Well, and I mentioned the courts can be an issue for contractors, and. We know, we do, we know what we're getting into. So, we'll see what happens this fall. And, uh, then, they've evidently. Funded themselves a year to raise some more funds and see what they can put together for. For, uh, completing this package.
Great, thank you.
Sure, no, it was, it was a pretty, and the meet, old meeting was twenty minutes, like, something like that? Was that one? Yeah, so. But, uh. It went according to plan, I guess.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm, I'm going to move to approve the monthly bills and warrants as presented.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got anything else for us today?
Don't lease over today.
And then we, we, uh, PAC meeting tomorrow night at six PM?
Yeah, six o'clock.
All right.
Okay, I'm moved to adjourn.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.